Since I live here, it's especially nice. All the rest of them have to travel for a change. At any rate, we're going to start out with a salute to the flag. Wayne, you want to read us some?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we should have roll calls. Kathy?
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Moss is absent. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Ricucci?
Here.
Mr. Denio is absent. Mr. Settis?
Here. Thank you. Since we're going to have a report from our planning director, I'll bet he's going to give it to us, too. Good morning.
Good morning. E.J. Vallee with Planning Services Division. I got to see most of you this morning on the way up here, except for a couple of you maybe enjoyed the long ride. Just I just have a few updates this morning. Upcoming Planning Commission hearing is on July 10th. We're bringing the community defense center zoning text amendment back where you can make your recommendations to our board of supervisors. We're also going to hear the sheriff and community plan update that is remembered as we continue from the last meeting so we can work with the property owner on land use issue. The board of supervisors, they had a meeting on June 17th. That's when they considered the appeal on Campbell's Home caretakers residence. They ended up denying the third-party appeal and approved the minor use permit for that. There's going to be a couple of board meetings in July. There's a July 8th meeting down in Auburn for the board of supervisors and also on July 21st and 22nd. That one will be up here in Tahoe for anybody interested. There's going to be the appeal on the Lundberg variance. There are actually two appeals filed on that of your decision. Board of supervisors will also receive an update on the Village at Squaw Valley project, the specific plan, and they'll also receive a report on Tahoe to an update which you will receive in the morning today yourself. And lastly, I just want to let you know that the Planning Services Division has hired a new senior planner, Sherri Conley, who is sitting behind me. She's worked for the county several years ago and we're very happy to have her back. And today is her first day and what better way to have a first day than come up to Tahoe and spend it up here. So anyway, I want to welcome her and that's all I have unless you have any other questions.
Any questions to E.J.?
E.J., you mentioned the 10th for our next meeting, right?
Yes.
Is there going to be another one in July or is it just the 10th of this morning?
Right now, just July 10th. We do have a second meeting scheduled, but I'm not sure we have any items on there yet. Kathy?
Possibly the say, but...
Yeah, probably not. I think applicants out of town on that one. So, yeah, right now we may not have a meeting, but we've been keeping you guys busy every two weeks, so don't be surprised if there are items that come up.
Well, that's good. For me, I have CTC on it. Well, thank you, E.J.
You bet.
At this time, we usually allow the public to come up and address the commission on items not on the agenda. If there's anyone that would care to do that, except for the people standing... Please come forward if you want to talk about things other than what's on the agenda. Good morning.
Good morning. Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident, for the record. I'm here today, I've been to the board of supervisors and the TRPA legal committee. There is a project that's going on at the lake in Tahoe Vista between the Franciscans. It is a Mardis Camp project. They're stating that it is a single-family residence. I've been at this since March 18th. Staff has been contacted. I've been notified that it will be reviewed during occupancy. And I just wanted you to hear it before I have to write a letter to the newspaper and put it out there. I believe that this is a change in use and it should have gone through another process. Again, staff has all my records, the fire department has my records, the TRPA has my records, and my dissatisfaction with the process as it's going on. And my second thing, Norstar has been pulled from the agenda. Are you going to make a comment about it? Should I comment then or should I comment now?
Well, if you can't come in the future, I would suggest you comment then because we're not going to do it. But if you want to comment now, I guess since it was scheduled, no?
Yeah, no. What I would say, the applicant has requested... Am I on? You can hear me, I'm pretty loud. The applicant requested a continuance. So, what I would say is any hearing on the item be, is your decision to continue that item, but it be done at a different time.
Okay, I'll comment then. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ellie. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll close the public comment and move on to first item. Washburn Residence.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Chairman of the Commission. Steve Gilmore presenting on the app... Planning Services Division today. As you indicated, the request before you today is a final application, subdivision modification for the Washburn residence. Where the property is located here. Project itself, the applicants are proposing to construct a new single-family dwelling with a attached garage on this currently vacant property out in the Secret Flat area. The property itself is cited on Fulton Crescent Drive. There's a short section of Fulton Crescent Drive that's currently unimproved. And this property will actually gain access from the southern correction off of a shared driveway to the new residence. There's a house under construction just to the west or north of the project site. The project includes a small portion of the garage that extends into the 20-foot both mountain and front setback area. The corner of the garage will be approximately 14 and a half feet, 11 feet to the eaves. The zoning for the area requires a minimum front setback of 20 feet from property line. However, the topography of the property does drop off from the roadway location or where the driveway is going to enter the front setback area and does meet the slope exception that's contained within the zoning ordinance and the provisions for that that allow the structure to be located closer to the front property line. However, when Fulton Acres number three subdivision was created, the lots within that subdivision contain a 20-foot setback line that's identified on the final maps for that subdivision. So what the applicant's requested is that we modify that for lot 189 of the project site to allow for this construction. I should note, and you can see from the slide, the aerial in front of you, there are a number of other properties that have experienced the same benefit and allowed structures to be located closer to the front property line. It's pretty common in this area, particularly with the heavy snowfall and the topography of the sites and consistent with this property. So, staff's recommendation for you today is that you approve the applicant's request subject to the findings and recommended conditions of approval that say appear in your staff's report. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions, Mr. Gilmore?
Let's see. Yeah, I was looking at the maps and there's reference to a dirt road and a paved road. So there's a dirt road on the side of the paved road closer to the house?
Yeah, actually, if you look at this slide here, Fulton Crescent, you know, it's the right-of-way itself, there's a small portion of it that's unimproved. And this property is cited in between that area and off of the improved section. The way the project is designed is there's a driveway that provides access to the property to the west and the driveway will come off of that, for the Washburn residence will come off of that shared driveway.
So that improved portion of the road is adjacent to the improved portion?
Yeah, if you look at the line for where it says room our way and Fulton Crescent Drive, that connection you'll see on this map, the line does not connect. That portion is not improved in between there.
Steve?
Yeah. So if this wasn't on a subdivision map, the variances allowed would be automatic?
They're administrative. They meet the exception criteria and the zoning ordinance. So if it weren't for being on the map, we wouldn't have the pleasure of being before you today on this.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions, Steve? Thank you. Does the applicant or the applicant's representative care to come forward and add to the discussion here? Morning.
Morning. My name is Brad Altman. I'm a professional engineer with Sagan Design Group representing the Washburns and we accept staff's findings.
You agree with all the staff's conclusions, then?
Yes, we agree with staff's conclusions and findings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the public care to comment on this item? Seeing no one come forward, then we'll close the public hearing process and bring it back to the commission for some action of some sort.
Yeah, I can still move something. Okay. I move that the commission approve the subdivision modification to modify the 20-foot mapped front setback to allow for a front setback of 14 feet 6 inches in order to construct a garage. Do I need to add anything else into that?
Sequel findings, I guess, huh?
Is there any, yeah, environmental...
Yeah, you need to make a...
A negative deck?
Categorically exempt.
Exempt, okay. That it's categorically exempt and I move that we approve that it's categorically exempt from...
Secret.
Secret. Okay, thank you.
Second? Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments or questions? All losing paper? Oh, no. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss is absent. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes.
Mr. Denio is absent. Mr. Settis?
Yes. Motion carries and there doesn't seem to be anyone protesting, so I guess I won't give their appeal rights. Go on now. Huh? The next item is the Faulkner Underground Garage and that's in Squaw Valley. And I guess, Alan, you're going to help us with this, aren't you?
Yes.
Are you going to do the digging?
What's that again?
The digging?
The digging. There will be a lot of explanation about the digging. Yeah, Alan Bruce, I'm the project planner. There is a sheet that Kathy's handing out that should have been inserted as a condition of approval. It's requiring the... Showing the staff that LaHotten has approved with permits this particular project before we issue any grading or building permits for the project. It should have been inserted initially, but we are asking that to be added to the conditions if you approve the project. I do have the applicant representative here, Gary Davis. He will discuss a little bit more detail on some of the project aspects, especially the blasting. This particular project is at Squaw Valley. It is a proposal of a 10,000 square foot underground garage that will serve two residential parcels. It will go underneath the Sunnyside Ski Run to serve the two residences. There is also associated with that a pedestrian tunnel. Construction will include the installation required utilities and serve up to 12 parking spaces. To get everyone oriented where it is, it is located on the west side of the valley. In the green here is the zoning. So this is LDR, which is low-density residential. To the south is the Forest Recreation. You'll see here in the red, these are the parcels that we're talking about. The project site is only included, the garage entryway right here off of Granite Chief Road. The underground garage will come underneath here to these two residential lots. The Sunnyside...
Alan?
We don't get the benefit of...
We can't see your pointer.
Do you have another pointer?
Well, could you just carry the mic? Just pull it out.
I don't think I can show how they're going to see it, too.
Yeah.
Is there maybe a bit more voting on that, right?
There's not another one.
So, all right, so whoops. So anyway, okay, so the ski, I just indicated to the polygon, I indicate to the commission right now. So this is the Sunnyside Ski Run that runs right through here. The green I was indicating, that's the zoning. This is the LDR. Even though the parcels in the project description is including these four, this larger parcel comes down here, the project area is only right in this area. So the opening of the garage is right here where Granite Chief Road is and will go underground underneath Sunnyside Ski Run to serve these two residences. Squaw Creek is right here. The existing conditions, the one on the top left, that's looking south towards Squaw Creek from Granite Chief Road. The one on the bottom is identifying where there was a house at one time located here. That's the building pad and that is also looking to the south. The upper right is looking to the north towards Granite Chief Road and to the south that is looking directly to the west. You can see the Funatelle Tower that's located there. Now, the project itself, and I'll try to do this twice here, it shows the opening right here where the garage is. So there's a ramp that comes down to the 12 parking spaces and the residences will be located right here and here. And the surrounding information that's here, here's Squaw Creek. The crosshatching is the floodplain area. So obviously, this particular project is outside the floodplain. Surrounding land uses that you see here is residential. And here's the existing road, Granite Chief Road. So again, this is Granite Chief Road. This is the entry 26 by 26 that comes down a ramp to the 12 parking spaces and the two residential lots. Squaw Creek and the crosshatching is the floodplain.
All 12 of those are underground, right? All 12 of those are underground?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
The entire structure, the garage is underground except for what you're seeing here, the illustration. This is the opening that's coming in, the pedestrian tunnel to the left there and then the garage door itself. But that's only 26 by 26.
Out. I have another pointer, so...
Okay, you'll help me out here? Okay.
Ski run goes right over it.
So the red is the garage portion and the blue is showing that the residence is here. There was a lot of discussion on this particular project, you know, about the environmental effects. And there is a mitigated neck deck that is associated with it, went through the state clearinghouse. There were some comments that came in from LaHotten as well as the fire department in Squaw Valley. And outside, people reviewed it and there seemed to be here today, too, that will make comment. We did extensive review and studies on this. There's a geotechnical report. We did some review of it. And there's mitigation measures that we're proposing as part of this project that will minimize the impacts around the surrounding neighborhood. There's a 35-foot cut that's associated right at this location and part of that's going to be potential blasting. Some of the geotechnical report has indicated there's granite there. There's also volcanic rock. So mechanical equipment will remove the loose material, but the granite that's there, there's potential blasting that's there. Cross-section, part of the analysis that we did, obviously Squaw Creek is nearby. There's a 100-foot setback requirement per our zoning ordinance, but because of that 100-foot, we have to make certain determinations and findings. And there is a 43-foot vertical difference in elevation between Squaw Creek and the project itself. There is a variance request within that 100-foot setback to a 55-foot setback for a deck on the parcel to directly to the east. Now, I'll talk about the variance. There is a number of variances in this particular project and it's unique. There are four parcels that are involved on this. That's why you're seeing several variances. Typically, staff will come in and say, one parcel, here's the variances. But we're, this project area is actually including four parcels and that's why each variance is very specific to those individual parcels. The blue is highlighting the actual structure that's going to be proposed, the residence. The green is identifying our current setbacks. And because of the uniqueness of these particular lots being landlocked and Granite Chief being so far away, about 120 feet away, the house, because of minimized grading, is being pushed more to the north and requesting a 5-foot setback instead of requiring 20-foot setback. The purple is indicating what our setback is on the 100 feet. They're requesting the 55 and there's a future deck that they want to propose. It's not right up to that line, but that's the request of 55 because they're still designing the deck, but they would request 55 as part of it. And that's part of our analysis and part of our findings as well. This gives an idea of the hardship, the special circumstances that we have for this particular project. If there was no variances, what area this particular residence would be allowed to build in? And you could see in the gray there, they would have only given, you know, over 700 square feet. So again, because of the variance, they're requesting in the blue to make that larger and for residents there, at that location. Also, this is the parcel to the, well, directly above it. And the uniqueness, again, because of this particular project, is the garage. It's crossing over several parcels. We do look at this as a structure. So it goes across the lot line, it's got a 0-foot setback, so it needs a variance. It would have to maintain in the front 20 feet, you know, on the rear would be 10 feet. You can see in the black with the structure itself, with the foundation, they're requesting 0 feet. And we did talk to the applicant to find out, maybe there's another location they can put this garage, but because of the slope they need to come down into, the vehicles and the line of sight where the garage entrance is, this was the best they could do. And again, the limitation being that ski run, they're putting it underneath the ski run. So during the winter, people are skiing over on top of this particular garage. And if people are visiting, they would come in through the pedestrian tunnel and, which is located right here, access these two residential parcels. So it's very unique. You know, again, staff has to look at it for a structure. It's, you know, it's below ground, but it still needs a variances to each individual lot where it crosses over for 0-foot setback. Now, the lot sizes, we did review, part of our analysis to look at special circumstances, how these particular two lots are relating in lot size. They are very small and Gary Davis can go a little bit more detail of why they were created like this. It's very unique. It's pretty far away from the street, too. Each one of these individual lots has access directly on the street. These two do not. And so there are, because of the lot size as well, the applicant is requesting lot size consideration and that's part of the variance request as well. Now, I do want to real quickly go back because part of the discussion is about the blasting. And we've, staff reviewed it very intensely. And part of the mitigation measures when we looked at it is how do we handle mitigation measures on it? There is a licensed professional that handles the blasting, how they correspond with the sheriff's department, how they transport it, how they use it, when they use it, how much they can use. So staff has put a specific condition, condition 17, you can see in your packet. They have to provide to us that there is a licensed expert in this field that's going to handle this. So there's those mitigation measures that they, with their license, their training, is able to do this type of work out there. There is also specifically, as part of the concerns that came up was about the dust control. The condition 29, you'll see in your packet as well, is part of our mitigation measures. We discussed about a dust control plan to be submitted to us prior to any grading and construction. So there will be water truck out there to have the dust control as well. And I do have Sarah Gilmore from engineering can talk a little bit more about the geotechnical information. There was some discussion about that and I'm going to present it to her before I give it to the applicant to discuss a little bit more how staff looks at this type of information and how it's analyzed since, again, specifically, there were some questions that some people were raising about that. So you have that for your information if they talk about it.
Question? Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, do the same people own all four lots?
No, they don't. There is part of the project application that came in. We do have the Squaw Valley Resort LLC. They own the Sunnyside Ski Run area and they've been working, the applicant's been working with them to allow the entitlements there. So staff is, as we write these conditions, they've been contacted and letting know what's going to be done. But they do not own all four, no.
Did they own, have we changed any setbacks or rulings concerning those lots since the people bought the lot?
Since they bought it, no. But previously, it's a good question, Nikki, they did have, this particular site did have variances in the past, back in 2008, I believe it was, 2006. It actually went to Planning Commission as well as the board of supervisors for setback to water cores as well as setback to structure.
And were the variances granted?
They were granted through the board of supervisors, but never exercised.
Alan, could you go back to where you had all of the lot sizes?
Yes.
What is to the direction of where 01 is?
It's a creek.
That's the creek, okay. Is there anything on the other side of the creek? Are there homes on the other side?
Ski area.
Is it, it's all ski?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just, if it's some sort of open space area, whether there are more structures on that side?
See if I can, the aerial might help a little more here, too.
There it is.
Oh, there, okay. I can give my bearings. So it's pretty open on that side, okay.
Yeah, that's the main ski run at the very bottom. You see it coming through this and then the other ski run goes right through this project.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, there's actually a bridge that's here where the ski run is.
Those are the two building sites.
Oh, yeah.
Here's the ski run where the garage will be underneath that ski run. Here's Granite Chief Road. So they'll access the garage from here, go underneath the ski run to the two building sites, two lots right there.
How was that ever visualized, that they would get access to those lots? How was that, I mean, how would they ever landlocked?
The applicant will describe a little bit more. He's got a lot of history on Gary Davis's team. But we, when staff reviews it, I mean, these are legal lots that we analyzed and they have the current zoning for residential, single-family. So we looked at it and they proposed variances they would have to just because of the uniqueness of these lots being landlocked and so small.
So you would typically park on that, into that street and walk across the ski area to have access without this parking facility, as I see it?
Were you sitting here and worrying?
Well, see, the loop on the end of Granite Chief Road where the entrance... Oh, I don't know how to use it typically. So here's Granite Chief Road and this goes out. And so they would have parked along here and walked across to these sites and that was the condition that they...
Right, yeah, there was a residence here before.
Yeah. I had the advantage now, acknowledge that I went out with Gary Davis to look at this site, so I'll just disclose that. Where was the residence before?
It was down, my understanding...
It's on this, I think it was on this parcel right here, right, Alan?
Yes.
Oh, 44.
Right there.
That one.
44.
I think the aerial might even show.
It's a little hard to see upstairs. Alan, I have a question. On the garage entrance, that nice-looking building, what property is it on?
It's on two.
It's on what?
It's on two parcels. It's located right where this line is, right there.
Yeah, it's on two separate parcels.
Correct. Correct. And that's the variance. That's why it's kicking in the variances for that as well.
Okay.
Because of just the uniqueness. And again, staff analyzed this because the line of sight coming in, the amount of grading to minimize it and the slope going down into the garage, it's a straight shot from there to the parcel directly to the west. And so that's what came in and plus, they had to make sure when they talked to Squaw Valley, it's got to be pretty far away from their ski area where the run is, too. So they had to push it pretty far over as well. So that's why you have... So that's why you have that variance for that particular one as well.
So, question then, the applicants who own the two small lots that have the proposed residences coming on them, also own two other lots over here? Could you show me a, a Sessors map showing the different lots and who owns what?
I will, you know what, Nikki, what I'll do is...
Right there, that's good.
The applicant is here, but what staff reviewed...
See, I don't see the two lots you're talking about.
There's some little skinny thing there.
There's these two ones in the red that's showing, this is to identify why this is here, in red is the lot sizes and why the variance. But the two ones in red is part of the project, but then there's this small skinny one, which used to be, what Gary Davis has indicated to us, this used to be the access point to get to this, these two lots.
So that still exists? They still have that access to the landlocked, as you call them, lots?
Correct.
Through that easements or right-of-ways there? So that still exists? They could, in effect, drive through there? I mean legally, not necessarily with, you'd have to have a four-wheel terrain vehicle maybe, but that would be the route that they would normally take? Legally?
I don't know if a vehicle can go through there, actually, because it's pretty steep in that area, and plus, I'm not sure what the width is here in the...
Right, but I mean, they have the legal right, that's where they would make, put in a road, build to have it graded and access normally.
That would allow them access rights to walk over here to get to this location.
Or drive if they want to put a road in and pay for it.
Good question, Nikki. I haven't analyzed that to see if that would be, I'd have to look, talk to...
But I'm seeing, does anybody else see what it looks like, what you're pointing out as the access?
Yes, this right here, this is...
Is that, I mean, is that an easement for those people, for those lots?
Yes.
Okay, so an easement, that's a travel easement, so they could put a road there and access through there? That's correct, or do I need to ask counsel?
I would say from, I had to rely on my engineering, because there's certain slope, there's certain width. From planning perspective, you know, we'd have to look at turnaround, it's quite a bit. But I'll let Sarah answer.
It's an incredibly skinny lot. It's, it would be a walking access, and it's not an easement over another, it's its own parcel with a parcel number.
Okay, so it wouldn't function the way that we think.
It would not function as a usable, you couldn't build anything in there, and it's very steep. It almost functions purely, you might speculate, for a legal connection to a road.
Okay, any other questions?
There's a parcel number 22 that looks like it's to the west.
Yes.
Is that a buildable parcel, or is that straight out of the creek, or?
It is zone, LDR, the applicant does own this, I mean, the project owner. So it is zoned, LDR, but it's not part of our analysis, nor is it part of our conditions of approval. And it's a pretty steep area, too. I'd say it's over 30%. So if they come in with another project, we would have to analyze that. And I really, truthfully, I don't know what they, until I see something, what could be done, but it's very steep. And that vertical, again, what I was trying to demonstrate to the variance, there's a 43-foot vertical distance that you have here before you get to the other two lots. So it does, I mean, it goes down pretty steep.
And so that other parcel, does the Squaw Creek go through it?
That one, I guess it goes around it. You can see here...
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, it looks like part of the floodguy.
I guess a little of it does, doesn't it? A corner of it, yeah. I think it'd be a tough one there.
It's steep.
It's just straight into the creek.
Okay, that answers that. Just curious, I guess, the ski area is granted an easement or some kind of ability to...
Dash Lane?
That's still being hammered out. They allowed staff, obviously through the entitlement process, while we're presenting it to you, that they were satisfied with what I'm seeing here. They've given a copy of all of our information as well. So they, correct, they were, they're still, Gary Davis can talk a little bit more about that, but they're still hammering out the exact details about the easements. But this particular one, the entitlements, you know, we are satisfied with, staff is, and that's why you see it in front of today. But I'll let, if there are any further questions for me, I'll be happy to answer, but I would like to have Sarah talk a little bit about the geotechnical.
Okay. You have a question?
No, go ahead.
Okay, turn to Public Works, Sam.
Hi, Sarah Gilmore, Engineering and Surveying. And we did review a geotechnical report that was provided with the project as a part of doing the environmental review. I believe you've seen letters going back and forth showing some of the information, so I just wanted to go over just the real basics, that four test pits were dug as a part of this project, as is standard with geotechnical investigation. One and a half to five feet deep, where they met refusal. And one pit did encounter some groundwater, perched groundwater, which is very typical in the area, as explained in the Geotech. Specifically looking at this groundwater, not to be confused with the aquifer, that's much, much deeper. There were a litany of recommendations provided by the Geotech that are incorporated into the project design, that will make recommendations for how the retaining wall and foundations will infiltrate and pull the drainage of this perched groundwater around it. And you can certainly have Gary Davis, the engineer, talk further about the design if you're interested in it, but I wanted you to know that we did look at these things, both Engineering and Surveying and Environmental Health. And additionally, it's somewhat standard to be able to look at the building code as well, which has a vast array of how they can deal with design of a foundation that has surcharge of water around it.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, just a question, you said you did test pits five-foot deep. How deep is the actual construction for the bottom, the foundation of the garage going to be?
I was going to ask Gary that, I don't remember off the top of my head. It's pretty deep, much deeper than five feet.
So the test holes didn't go down near as far as...
Thirty-five feet.
So, yeah, not even 20% of the depth?
Right, that's correct. But that wouldn't be uncommon when you're meeting refusal of pretty solid rock, you know what it's going to be, it's going to be some kind of rock. So we can ask Gary that question when he gets up here.
Any other questions? Okay, if that concludes staff's presentation, we'll go to the applicant, I guess, and suggest that, I guess, Gary, are you going to come forward?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission and staff. Thank you for having us today. I'm going to give you a little history on this project. It goes way back in time into the 50s and 60s when Alex Cushing owned all this property, the ski run as well as the subdivision of lots. Can we go back to one of the overall maps? Back up. There you go, Matt. No, the bigger picture. Keep going. There. That'll work. So when Alex Cushing, back in the 50s and 60s, because getting ready for the Olympics, and owned the ski area, obviously, he sold off this land for Granite Chief subdivision, which are the parcels that... What's going on here? Okay, there we are. So all these parcels here were part of the Granite Chief subdivision, and he sold that because he needed some capital at the time. These lots are mostly quarter-acre lots. Shortly afterwards, he came back and did these three, four lots, 44, 43, 22, and 34, which is this very weird lot that is providing legal access to these two, this one, through this little four-foot strip here, over through between two homes to get back to the roadway. You'd never be able to get that approved today. It meets no standards under the state law. It's completely an oddball deal, which is why we're here today. These lots then were built on, the first one on Lot 44 was built on, I believe, back in the 60s. That's where the house was previously, that was torn down two years ago. That house had been abandoned for a number of years. It was a Thorne and Nancy Cushing side, a different owner owned it at that time. Before that, Mr. Burke owned it. We worked for Mr. Burke 15 years ago to get a variance for parking on Granite Chief Road, which is a substandard road, substandard width, very steep, substandard pitch, and we were able to carve out a little piece on Lot 34 to park two cars, which would have been, allowed him to build on Lot 43 at that time. The problem all the way along is Ski Corp never wanted anybody to build there when Nancy and Alex owned this property. They saw a liability issue there for people walking across the ski run, trying to access it, no parking, and it just was something they did not want to approve, even though they have legal ownership of this small strip, which is right here, they have legal ownership. And this has always been Squaw Valley's issue of liability right there. The practical driveway would be right across here. Unacceptable to Squaw Valley. With new ownership of KSL coming in and buying the ski area, KSL has a relationship, some of the people in Denver, with Mr. Faulkner, who owns a ski area in Austria, and they're able to come to an amenable decision of this underground garage, which does not impact the ski run. So we purposely oriented the entrance to the garage out of the ski run area, more uphill, to turn sharply left and downhill to get under Lot 44. The houses that are proposed, and only one is designed at this point, have potentially six bedrooms. Placer County Code requires three-quarters of a parking space per bedroom. That's four parking spaces per house ultimately. That gives us eight parking spaces. The garage area under the ski run only supports six parking spaces. So we had to carve two more out under Lot 44 to give us the required eight. And at that point, it became obvious to us from a structural engineering point that Lot 44 should just be excavated for the other extent of the parking, for the elevator, for the access stairs, and that therefore would become the foundation for any house built on Lot 44. The previous house on Lot 44 covered 51% of that lot. It's a small substandard 6,000-square-foot lot, and again, most of the lots in this subdivision are in the neighborhood of 20,000 square feet, 12,000, 18,000 square feet. So we're quite a bit undersized. So one of the variances we're asking for is to be able to build a house to the same extent of the house that was there before. On Lot 43, we're asking for a variance, again, to the 35% required coverage because of the setbacks, because of the creek setback, and that works for Lot 43. The creek setback and the variance for the setbacks on Lot 43 were approved by the Planning Commission and Squaw Valley MAC back in 2006, as earlier indicated. We're asking for exactly the same variances today that were approved then. Those variances expired because that owner was not able to reach agreement with Squaw Valley Ski Corp to do a project that would allow him to parking that would fit the home. Had they done that and built at the time, we wouldn't be here today. But this is a really good solution, it's a win-win for everybody. You cannot park on Granite Chief Road without causing problems for the fire department for access up there. It's way narrow, it's probably like 16 to 18 feet in spots. It barely allows a fire truck to get up to those homes as it is, and parking on the edge of the road would certainly preclude that. The underground garage is a good solution. The size of it, which while it sounds large, part of it is under Lot 44, part of it is under the ski run, and that's using the standard Placer County requirements for a parking space of 20 feet long with a 25-foot backout space and an egress for walking persons. That creates that much volume. Certainly, volume costs a lot of money to build, and we would build it smaller, but we're trying to meet the Placer County standards on width, parking spaces, and so forth. The garage has been into the Building Department already. We've already received plan checks on the building permit for the garage. We're responding to those plan check comments today and with the Building Department. The house on Lot 43 has been designed, and we'll go to the Building Department probably next month, should we gain approval from all of you. So that's kind of the history of how we got there, and this is the solution that provides the best solution for the neighbors, for the fire department, for the use of these lots that are already entitled. These lots already have water and sewer connected to them, and have had historically water and sewer connected to them. This process with us started last fall. We submitted plans to Placer County Planning for EQ review after a scoping meeting, reviewing what had been done before back in '05. They suggested we still go back and do the whole thing over again, which we did. We were before the Squaw Valley MAC in March, was publicly noticed meeting. We were before the Squaw Valley MAC again in May, and then again in June. So we've had three publicly noticed meetings over a long period of time here. Everybody should be aware of this project and what the ramifications are. Our technical data has been submitted to the county since last winter. They've had a lot of this geotechnical reports and all the other traffic reports and such for quite a long time. LaHantain approved the project in January of this year. We have a LaHantain letter to that effect. The setbacks normally would apply to homes to keep homes from being too close together. Setbacks in this case are a little bit irrelevant in the fact that we're setbacks from the ski run. So the situation there is, you want to have the safety of the skiers in mind, you're not really setting back to another home or another property line. We've worked very carefully with Squaw Valley Ski Corp to make sure that the setbacks provide the safety they require for their skiers, and that is one of their main issues. Without their cooperation, this project is not possible. And we are deep, deep deliberations with them to refine all these things into a legal written agreement that will define responsibilities for the future on who's going to maintain this, who's going to own this, and the setbacks that will work for them. Let's see. So Lot 22, that question came up, and that lot we feel is unbuildable. That's this lot at the bottom here.
Down by the creek, right?
Yeah. This one here, this lot we feel is unbuildable, part of it's in the creek, all of it's within a hundred-foot setback. It's over 35% steep, it doesn't meet any possible building codes that we can see. So we don't intend to build on that lot, there's no intention. I do have people here today from the contractor who can talk about blasting specifically, if you'd like to hear anything about that. We also have our geotechnical engineer today who can talk about the water and subsurface water, if there's specific questions on that as well. And I'm open to any questions.
Yeah, I just have one question. The existing access through that little six-foot or four-foot walkway stuff, is part of the project to abandon that?
Yes, we want to clean up all these lot lines.
Okay.
And that'll be a separate process, we'll do a minor boundary line adjustment. We're going to give that part that crosses the ski run to Squaw.
Okay.
And the part up that goes kind of to the west to Squaw. And then there's two other property owners, this kind of goes through their yard.
Right.
And get rid of that as well, because it has no value and makes no sense, so we'd like to clean that up.
That'll be a future...
Right, because of timing, we're going to do that as the next step.
Okay, thank you.
And that'd have to be done before we go to any construction.
We? Emergency fire access, how do you address that?
Yes, we do with the fire department and the Building Department. That is a question they both have, and they have what they call an island of safety, which we've got to indicate on the plan, so that they, people can get out of the house, or if the garage was under fire and the house was on fire, you'd still have an island of safety. And so we're meeting all those building codes that deal with fire. Of course, the garage and the homes have to be sprinkled.
Yeah, the equipment can't actually get access to the property.
No, they would have, there's a fire hydrant. Oh, good, it's working. There's a fire hydrant right here, but they'd have to drag hose across the ski run, and they'd accept that as the disaster factor. The house will also have stand pipes, so they could hook up hose, drag hose over there and hook up the stand pipes as well. So we've been through the Building Code and the Fire Department with these plans.
What did you mean by island of safety?
Island of safety is a term in the Building Code where if somebody could get out of a burning building and be far enough away to not be caught in the plane.
And you've identified those spots?
It's on the building plans, but not on this entitlement plan.
I want to go to County Council, do we have anything we want to tell the applicant and/or the audience about our voting today that's going to be unusual? Can we use a simple majority of the five, or do we have to have a special?
No, simple majority.
I have a question. Concerning the size of the lots being so small, how come a six-bedroom house was proposed that would require so many parking lots instead of a smaller house on a smaller lot?
The economics of building this garage are significant, and so the larger home makes a little more economic sense than a smaller home. The footprint on these homes...
How so unless he's going to sell it?
Pardon me?
How so if he's not going to sell it? What's the, what benefits are you talking about?
Well, I'll let our representative... Well, I'll let our representative, our lawyer, talk to that, as he knows Mr. Faulkner very well and knows how he uses his homes around the world. But if you have a six-bedroom home, I'm sure you're going to have some guests.
Yes, I'm not asking that. The question is why a six-bedroom home on such a small lot? You knew the size of the lot when they're going in.
We did, but we also had the variance previous in 2005 that allowed for a larger home on this lot, and the larger home is only 2,000-square-foot footprint. This is not a large home in terms of a footprint. But if you go up several stories, that does gain you a lot more square footage for a building. So 2,000 square feet on a 6,000-foot lot is not an excessively large home in terms of a footprint.
Well, that's a matter of question, obviously.
I'm sorry?
I said that's a matter of discussion, obviously.
Yeah, everybody has their own opinion, sure.
And I guess the last question, I don't know that Gary, you would be knowing about it, but the, well, let me ask the applicant when he comes up.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Gary.
Very good. Thank you.
Do you want your attorney to come up?
Would he be able to answer your question better, Mr. Gray?
It had to do with the MAC, last MAC meeting, so maybe, maybe not.
At the end, just to add to that footnote, to the last MAC meeting, everybody loves the project, they just couldn't come to a vote on it.
So it was a divided vote, is what it was?
No, they couldn't come to a resolution of a vote, period.
They didn't vote on it whatsoever?
They didn't vote on it whatsoever, but we talked with each of them, and they do like the project, they just had a different way. Each one wanted to put the motion forward, and they couldn't get a consensus.
No consensus. Okay. Thanks.
Are you prepared to talk now, or would you rather talk later? What's the...
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Rick Traichock. I am Jack Faulkner's personal lawyer. I've been involved with Mr. Faulkner's activities in the United States for a number of years and have represented him since he and his entities acquired ownership here. I was the one that negotiated with Squaw Valley to obtain the right to the easements under the ski run and am continuing to negotiate the amended and restated agreement that we had originally assigned two years ago with Squaw Valley. And I don't have a formal presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions as to Mr. Faulkner's intentions and anything having to do with our side of the project.
Any questions? I guess not.
How long ago did Mr. Faulkner buy the property?
Mr. Faulkner purchased the property, the rights to it in 2008. He had an option on the property prior to that, but in 2008 is when the, if my memory is certainly correct, is when the contract was signed and he acquired title to all of these lots through different entities that were owned by Mr. Faulkner. And just as a little history, Mr. Faulkner and his family own a sold-in ski area in Austria. It's in the vicinity of Innsbruck. It's one of the largest skis in Europe, and Mr. Faulkner is in the ski business, and that's why he was interested in Squaw Valley, and I think that's why the current owners of Squaw Valley were interested in talking to Jack and giving him the rights to build the garage under the ski run, which would make this whole project viable. He also has a residence up in Whistler, spends time up in Whistler as well.
Okay. There's no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the public would care to comment on this project, please come forward and give us your name and tell us what you want to tell us.
Sure. Morning, gentlemen. Thanks for taking time to listen to us. My name is Mike Sayak. I'm the president of the Board of Squaw Valley Lodge, and I've served on the board since 2008. And with me today, let me introduce a few people. Evan Benjaminson, who's the president of Granite Peak, that had been our management company since the lodge was started some 20-odd years ago. Greg Gatto of Stoll Reeves, they've been at our law firm for about, again, since the beginning of the lodge. And also with us is, and I have to read this because the titles and titles are so huge. This is Dr., Professor Dr. Vladimir Bajanik, or Vlad to us. He's the staff scientist, he is a staff scientist in the Building Technologies and Urban Systems Department, Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory, University of California, and a consulting professor of Civil and Environmental Engineering Department, Stanford University, and has over 50 years of direct involvement in all facets of the building, construction industry. He's a homeowner of the lodge and an advisor to the board of directors, and I call him the philosopher behind everything we do.
Can I ask just one quick question, since I'm not familiar? Where's the Squaw Valley Lodge?
Absolutely. That was the next point I was going to make.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Where it says existing building?
Oh, it's right there.
These, this building, this building, this building, and there are one, three more, seven buildings.
I'll try the area.
This is the Squaw Valley Lodge. So we're actually, we're, I think at some point, we measured the distance between the property and the lodge and somewhere about 60 to 100 feet distance. So the, we're here. Okay, perfect. That helps. All right. So the pointer would be, this is one of the buildings of the lodge, this is another. This is four, five, and six, one, two, and three, I'm sorry, one, three, and two. This is building one, building three, building two is here, seven is over here, four, five, and six are over here. Again, it makes up 218 units. We're a ski-in, ski-out condo tell association next to K22.
A quick question.
Go ahead.
If you're looking at the map here, is the lodge built within the 100-foot setback from the creek? You have a variance for that too, I guess, just for comparison purposes.
Not sure.
Huh?
I'm not sure on that one.
Okay.
Okay. We're here to, we're here to address concerns that we have a construction project up today. And by the way, we like the project. We're not against the project. We don't have any issues with the project being built. We're very excited that Mr. Faulkner's here. We think he'll be a tremendous asset to the valley. Our concern is with the planning of the project and some of the issues that we have. We urge you to delay the decision of this project as we've not had the time or the necessary information to evaluate their proposals. Okay. The shortcomings of the early notice that has not, have not given us at the lodge enough time to evaluate all the aspects of this project, to include the economic effect of the lodge, noise, dust, vibration, hydrology. The economic effect of the project would likely be very significant and could result in closing the lodge for several months, as the project could affect the usability of the lodge. Our highest concern after the economic effect is the hydrology or water flows. The water plant, if not managed correctly, could result in significant damage to the lodge. For example, and I have some photographs that you guys can pass. For example, in 1997, due to improper infumation of water plants, coupled with a major storm, resulted in a flood of the lodge that caused millions of dollars of damage. And I sent the photos up to you of the flood that shows you how a small change on this mountain could make, could affect, could have a big effect. The lack of time to evaluate and the incomplete information on the project plan has left both owners and representatives of the lodge concerned the project may have significant impacts that affect the lodge. Finally, this is a complicated project, and there is insufficient information available to determine the impact of the requested variances and the use permits on the surrounding properties, the short-term effect of the construction, and the long-term effect of the proposed project. We hope to sit down with the applicant and planning staff and discuss the additional information that is needed and measures they may mitigate, and measures they may take to mitigate significant impacts and be incorporated into the project as enforceable conditions of approval. We're requesting the planning commission withhold any action of this project until that information is available to the public. And just something out at the end, Squaw Valley is an incestuous place. We all know each other. We all work together. You know Gary from other projects, I personally know Gary from other projects, so working in the valley, and actually, he is, we've hired him to work on various aspects of the lodge. So he said we will be working together, and again, we urge the board to delay. I'd like to introduce Greg Gatto, a lawyer who's got some more technical aspects of the plan that we have concerns about.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Severson, commissioners. My name is Greg Gatto. I'm an attorney with Stoll Reeves, and I'm here on behalf of the Squaw Valley Lodge Owners Association. I would like to make a quick clarification before I begin. On page seven of the staff report, there is a summary of the Squaw Valley MAC meeting. The MAC did actually take a vote on the variance for coverage, and MAC voted 4 to 2 not to recommend approval to allow lot coverage to exceed the 35%. As you've heard from Mr. Sayak, the lodge does not oppose the project in concept. Gary Davis graciously agreed to meet with members of our board yesterday afternoon, and we believe we've started a good dialogue. We also met with the applicant's attorney this morning, and he has stated the applicant's willingness to work with us. However, there is currently insufficient information for the public and you, the commissioners, to adequately evaluate the potential project impacts and to ensure that those impacts will be mitigated to a less-than-significant level. The environmental document that the commission is considering today does not fulfill the mandates under CEQA, to take a hard look at the consequences of project approval, and to describe specific and effective mitigation measures to lessen a project's significant environmental effects. The mitigated negative declaration for this project is essentially a wait-and-see document. For many of the impacts described, the NAGDEC concludes that it will wait to see what the impact will be and then decide on an appropriate course of mitigation. This deferral of analysis and mitigation does not satisfy CEQA's requirements for definite and enforceable mitigation measures. One of the primary purposes of CEQA is to demonstrate to an apprehensive citizenry that the agency has in fact analyzed and considered the environmental implications of its action. Environmental documents under CEQA are intended to bolster the public's confidence in the agency's decision and provide the agency with information from a variety of experts and sources. After reviewing the NAGDEC for this project, we remain apprehensive. This may sound familiar to the commission, but here's what we do know about the project. What's being proposed here is a 35-foot excavation into a hillside directly above a condominium complex. This immense hole in the ground will then be filled by an impermeable 10,000-square-foot block. We also know that there's groundwater in the area as high as one foot below ground level. What we don't know is the extent of the subsurface flow of the groundwater. The test pits used for the hydrogeological report were extremely shallow, ranging in depth from one to five feet. The excavation proposed by the applicant extends up to 35 feet below ground. We know for certain that the excavation and eventual construction will intercept groundwater. The applicant's own consultant, Holdridge &amp; Cole, concludes that the project, quote, "may result in significant groundwater flow through the face of cuts made for retaining walls or site grading." Holdridge &amp; Cole explains further that, quote, "perched groundwater may cause moisture intrusion through concrete slab on grade floors, degradation of asphalt concrete pavements, and other adverse conditions." We don't know how much groundwater will be intercepted and where it will be diverted once this huge dam is placed in the ground, but as Gary Davis explains, the intent of the project design is to reintroduce any groundwater that is intercepted back into the subsurface. This re-diversion of the groundwater could alter groundwater flows so that the water daylights on the bank of Squaw Creek, creating possible erosion, sediment, and flooding impacts to the creek. The project could also concentrate flows to the downhill improvements, resulting in deterioration or degradation of the lodge buildings and common area. The NAGDEC did not assess these potential off-site impacts. While Holdridge &amp; Cole acknowledges that these significant hydrological impacts must be mitigated, the NAGDEC proposes no real mitigation, instead deferring development of mitigation to a final drainage report prepared after project approval and during site preparation. The deferral of this vital mitigation subverts the CEQA process and deprives both the commission and the affected public of the opportunity to review and comment on the adequacy of the proposed measures. To properly defer mitigation in this manner, the county must identify specific and enforceable performance standards in a list of measures that must be considered as part of a mitigation plan. In this case, a standard such as no net increase of flows onto downhill properties would be appropriate. However, the negative declaration has not assessed the baseline flows, and without a baseline, there's no way to enforce this measure. The analysis of several other potentially significant impacts suffer from the same infirmities. For example, to mitigate the potential impacts related to extensive excavation, including blasting, the negative declaration merely proposes that the applicant hire a state-licensed contractor and a geotechnical engineer to observe excavation activities. In essence, the negative declaration is punting the formulation of any mitigation measures and concludes that by hiring two guys that have a piece of paper allowing them to perform construction in California, all impacts would be mitigated to a less-than-significant level. This is a ridiculous contention, and GUT CEQA's directive that the public agencies identify the actual measures to mitigate a project's significant impacts. The mitigation for construction impacts are likewise vague and unenforceable. For example, mitigation measure 6.2 requires that stockpiling in our vehicle staging areas shall be located as far as practical from existing dwellings and protected resources in the area. How is the county supposed to enforce this measure? If materials are stockpiled 10 feet from the lodge, is that sufficient? If code enforcement is called, do they have any standards to use to determine what a practical distance is? With regard to the merits of the project itself, the proposal simply does not fit the legal criteria for a variance. The project applicant is requesting a total of 12 different variances from the county's land use standards. The county is essentially being asked to rezone the property through the variance process. This violates the essential elements of planning and zoning law. A variance should only be granted in rare instances where the project applicant would suffer substantial hardship due to special circumstances necessitating relief from land use standards in order to bring the property into parity with other properties in the vicinity and the same zone. With regard to the hardship finding, the record is devoid of what the hardship to the applicant would actually be if the variances were denied. There is no claim that the applicant would not be able to build a single-family residence in a garage without a variance. The only claim of hardship is that the applicant will not be able to build a 12-to-14-car garage with a 3,000-square-foot building pad unless the variances are granted. Because the property can be put to effective use consisting with the existing zoning, without allowing 12 exceptions to the county's land use standards, approval of the variance request is not supported by law. With regard to the special circumstances finding, there is no logical relationship between the special circumstances cited by the applicant and the variances requested. The lack of access is not alleviated by allowing additional coverage or encroaching within setback areas. An approximate of Squaw Creek would support only a single variance in this instance and not the other 11 requested. Finally, the small lot size does not create a special circumstance allowing for an increase in coverage. There are many other larger lots within the area that have less building coverage than that requested by the applicant. We've provided you with just a small sampling of such properties, including four on Granite Chief Road that are under 1,500 square feet. That brings us to the last finding required to support a variance, and that's the relief is necessary to provide parity with properties in the vicinity and within the same zone. If approved, the variances would allow for construction of a three-story residence on a 3,000-square-foot building pad, allowing for a 5,000 to 6,000-square-foot house and a 12-to-14-car garage. Can you honestly look in the eyes of the residents of Squaw Valley and tell them a 6,000-square-foot house and a 14-car garage is necessary to create parity? The Placer County Code allows approval of the variance only when it is the minimum departure from the requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to grant relief to the applicant. The variances requested are not the minimum required to achieve parity with other properties. They constitute an unlawful special privilege. Based on the deferred analysis and improper mitigation in the NAGDEC, there is a fair argument that the project may have a significant effect on the environment. This mandates that a full EIR be prepared. We respectfully request that the commission remand this matter back to staff to address the issues raised in our comment letter and mitigate where feasible. If after further analysis and appropriate mitigation, the project impacts cannot be reduced to a less-than-significant level, an EIR should be prepared. It's our understanding that the majority of earthwork for this project is not slated to begin until the spring or summer of 2015, and given the schedule, any delay associated with fixing the environmental document should not affect the construction. Thank you again for your attention to our comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone?
I've got a...
I've got a question. Were you at the last MAC meeting?
I was not.
Okay. I was just trying, I'm still trying to get a grasp on what happened at that MAC meeting because I'm not getting a clear picture.
I think we have one of our board members that could probably speak to that one.
Was the original depiction by the applicant, as you, what do you call it, too, Alan?
You're talking about the vote that happened?
Yeah.
I wrote the staff report, that is what occurred. There was a large discussion about the project, the uniqueness. There was a vote on the lot coverage four to two not to have that go forward, but everything else, they couldn't come to a resolution on the variances.
I think we can consider that reasonable. All right, is there anyone else that would care to come forward and comment? Thank you. Okay, if no one else is coming forward, we'll allow the, oh, here we come.
My name is Jake Hudson, and I work for Holdridge &amp; Cole. I'm a professional engineer and a certified engineering geologist, and I authored the reports that were submitted to the county for this project, and I'm available to answer any questions, if you have any. I don't want to get into kind of nitpicking back and forth over debating the engineering issues. I feel that we've addressed the engineering issues with this project. It is a unique residential project, clearly. It's a unique site, and so if you have any questions, I'm available to answer those. Thank you.
Without getting into nitpicking, just one question. This whole issue about the blockage of underground water by the parking structure, can you maybe just a little more detail on that and what's your take on that?
Certainly. We've done a lot of work in the Tahoe Basin over the years. I've worked in this area the majority of my career, and we have an office in Truckee. So in the Tahoe Basin, they require a soil hydrology report, and it's very common practice that if you intercept groundwater with any structure to mitigate that so that you're not taking groundwater and discharging it on the surface. And so what we propose, or what we did on this project was you intercept the groundwater so that the structure does not have to be designed for hydrostatic pressures against the walls, and so you drain, you have back-of-wall drains, and then those drains go into infiltration trenches, which would be on the lower, obviously downhill, from the proposed project, and those infiltration trenches would still be on the uphill side of Squaw Creek and would be discharging, our calculations are on the order of two gallons per minute, which is a small flow, but it's two gallons per minute. And it would be similar to a leach field for an onsite waste disposal system, discharging the long trenches that would reinfiltrate the water so that it's not discharged as surface water. It would be on the uphill side of Squaw Creek, so the potential for that water to impact the lodge buildings would be very remote, like, I would like to say impossible. The creek is in between the two, and so we are mitigating the interception of groundwater by reinfiltrating it, so we're protecting water quality and water quantity. Did I answer your question with that?
No, I'm familiar with some of this stuff, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, sir Jake? Did you have a mother named Sally?
Yes. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Okay, I guess that concludes then. Gary, do you want to come back and talk a little more, or is that?
Well, I have a couple of things I want Jake to elaborate on.
Okay.
The kind of standard in the industry of the depth to refusal and the thirty-five-foot cut, if you elaborate on how much you know about the subsurface based on your studies.
Well, it is, the standard is if you were in soil, would be to go two times the width of the footing, below the footings for your geotechnical investigation. Clearly, we didn't get there. Our test pits hit refusal on bedrock, and, but on this site, there is the slope that goes down to Squaw Creek, which is exposed, and so we didn't just kind of go, oh, well, we don't know what's there. We logged that slope or observed that slope. I'm an engineering geologist, so we geologically mapped that slope. We looked at the geology in the site on geologic maps. I'm rather familiar with the geology of Squaw Valley. I've done a lot of work in that area, and so we are confident that it is rock under the site as opposed to soil. So we do know with some good judgment as to what's there below the site.
If any other questions? There were, there were some pictures that were given to us by an opponent, I believe. I'd sure like you to look at those, if you would, and give me your interpretation of how that came about and where, because I have some background in it too, and I don't know that that is any result of this site, and I'm not sure whether they tie together in any way or not.
This is, these photos are of the nineteen ninety-seven New Year's flood in Squaw Valley, rain-on-snow event, which is when things happen flood-wise in the mountains here typically. And I'll be honest with you, I worked for the Squaw Valley Lodge for this. There was quite a bit of work afterwards specifically involved with litigation between the lodge and the ski corporation. And without getting into the details in that, obviously, a whole lot of areas flooded during this event, and it was, you know, a significant flood event, a hundred-year event or something like that. But essentially, the argument would be that some of this flooding was exasperated by the grading that has gone on in the ski area above this. This is a rather small project, and we are mitigating the surface water runoff, meaning that we are not increasing the surface water discharge from the site post-construction. Things will be reinfiltrated theoretically as naturally they would at this time. If you have a rock site, you do kind of question how much naturally infiltrates on the site to begin with, but that's kind of another issue. The interception of groundwater on this site is, we're estimating two gallons per minute. And I've tried to make that a rather conservative estimate, meaning a lot of water. My guess is it would be considerably less than that over time, but two gallons a minute is not going to cause this. This is considered, obviously, these are two completely different things. This is a rain-on-snow event where we had ten feet of snow that melted in a rainstorm within a matter of, you know, twenty-four hours or something, and this intercepting the groundwater would have no impact on the volume of water in Squaw Creek whatsoever. The part of the reinfiltration of the groundwater is not just to protect water quality, but it's to slow down the discharge of water so that you're not taking groundwater and dumping it into the creek and increasing the flow in the creek. That was kind of another long-winded answer, I think, but I hope I answered your question.
No, I think you answered my question. I think the relationship there may be sort of tentative, yeah.
It's, the whole idea of that we're going to impact the flow in Squaw Creek or potentially affect the lodge, this is negligible. It's, the amount of water we're going to intercept here is a teaspoon compared to a swimming pool in Squaw Creek. I mean, it's, it's nothing, so.
Any other questions, sir Jake?
Yeah, you're talking about the trenches where you're going to reintroduce the water? Have you identified where you're going to put those in?
Yes, they would be down slope so that we don't have to use pumps. It would be a gravity flow system, and they would be on the downhill side of the ski run.
Could you, could you just point?
Yes.
In this area here, going across slope, similar to a leach field for a septic system. The garage is up here.
If I, if I may interrupt, you could look on page nineteen of your staff report. Also has a plan. Page nineteen.
What you're saying, trenches, these are not open trenches, these are like a septic system where there are perforated pipes, gravel buried underneath the ground where, okay.
And the pipe would be near surface. We recommend thirty inches deep so it's not susceptible to freezing, and the trenches would be, off the top of my head, I want to say four feet deep and forty feet long. We've designed these with what I call a redundancy factor. It's, their infiltration capacity is twice what I estimate will come out during construction.
Are any of these infiltration ditches on the applicant's property?
No, they are on the Squaw Valley ski area, ski runs. The, to infiltrate them on the site, number one, we're in rock, so we're trying to infiltrate them into soil, and number two, it's not downhill, so trying to do it with gravity flow as opposed to having pumps.
Okay.
Got it?
Thank you, Jake.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Gary, do you want to take another shot?
Thank you very much. I'd like to speak to Mr. Gatto's comments to some of those. We had a very fruitful meeting with Mr. Gatto and the president of the Homeowners Association yesterday afternoon, along with Evan Benjamin. We've been trying to have a conversation with them for a few weeks and since the last Squaw Valley MAC meeting because they brought up some of these issues then, and unfortunately, we didn't get together until last night. But we have put together a list of things that we have proposed to them to try and mitigate their concerns. There's eight items, I believe. I sent that off to you folks, and some of them are staging of vehicles to be off-site, not idling in front of the condos. Another point is we've already met with the homeowners from Granite Chief Subdivision. You don't see any of those nearby neighbors having any concerns. We've answered their questions. But we want to work with the Squaw Valley Lodge. We want to make sure that noise is not a factor for them, dust control is not a factor for them, and we've made certain promises to that effect to do all of that with them, certainly on a voluntary basis. Doesn't need to be in a condition of approval to get us to be good neighbors and represent what we think is good for everybody around there. So we have looked at the bridge, we've looked at the roadway, we're going to do a vibration monitoring plan that will indicate any kind of blasting activity that creates ground shaking, we'll have that. We're going to have a noise receptor plan that will also indicate the number of decibels of noise from blasting and so forth that goes on in truck traffic so that we can work with them on that. We respect their reservations they currently have for this season, and we would say that we're not going to do any work in their high season in July and August and work with them on a schedule that's cooperative and works for all the neighbors. Perhaps the shoulder seasons of September, October, or April, May would be best for everybody, and we want to make sure that we're a good neighbor here. So with all due respect to Mr. Gatto, I have to say a couple of things about the variances. The staff has done an excellent job over many months of looking at all this material. They've indicated to me this is a classic case for these variances. Of all the variances are primarily due to crossing property lines, which is the only way you can get an underground garage from point A to point B. The only two variances that are not part of crossing property lines are the hundred-foot setback from Squaw Creek, which I mentioned was originally approved by the Planning Commission to fifty-five, and then the lot size variance for the building, which is thirty-five percent as normal, and we're asking for forty-two. So I think these variances are very, very, very logical. I do have a little blasting video. If anybody here has not seen blasting, would like to see what that, the noise effect and the dust effect. I'm happy to show that little clip to you. It's about thirty seconds. I also have our contractor here who does the blasting with his licensed blasting contractor who can, blasting employee who can talk about all the state regulations and things that go on with blasting. The little clip we have is in Alpine Meadows done by our contractor right among three homes on small residential lots. You can see there's almost no effect, no noise, no smoke, nothing. So if you're interested in that, I'm happy to run it, but if not, we'll let it go.
Is there any interest in shooting? It doesn't look like it.
Okay, the question did come up too about whether the lodge is in the hundred-foot setback, and some of you may know the original creek went probably right where the lodge is, and it was turned ninety degrees right at the lodge to go around it, and Squaw Creek is probably within twenty feet of those buildings. But that was one of the reasons for flooding is the creeks don't like to make ninety-degree turns naturally, and all that debris from an entire watershed in the ninety-seven New Year's flood came down with debris, rocks, logs, and everything, and it, right there at that ninety-degree turn, went right through the building. As Jake said, we're talking about a teacup of water compared to a swimming pool full of water in relationship. So that's all I have, and we do have, like I said, our contractor here who can talk about any, any earthwork, blasting, excavation, staging, if you'd like to hear it from him.
Okay, I wanted to maybe get a little bit into the hundred-foot setback, just so I'm clear on it, and I'm presuming, and staff can probably correct me, that the purpose of the hundred-foot setback is flood control? Is that why you have a hundred feet?
Correct, there's repairion that we look at. It's in our zoning ordinance. It's required. We look at repairion areas and floodplain, and we did a full repairion report on this. It's outside, this particular project is outside that. It's outside the floodplain, but yeah, we, and that's what the variance is about. We can review it more intensely and see if it is going to affect the creek individually, and this does not. But that standard is a hundred feet in the county.
And a hundred feet, does that come from Army Corps of Engineers?
That's our zoning ordinance. That's a hundred feet in the zoning ordinance countywide.
And I guess what I'm fishing for is a basis for that?
If you have history maybe on it.
I, we have, staff reviews the particulars. I mean, if this is something unique, we have to make sure that it meets that hundred feet. If it goes any closer, a variance is required, further analysis. Anytime a discretionary permit comes in, it triggers environmental review, and usually with that variance, we have to do the environmental review. Is it impacting the creek? So we put out this buffer area-wide to say, okay, it's sensitive areas, we know that, but how sensitive is it? We don't know until we still see the projects individually. Now we've got a project in, and we do all the analysis to make those determinations.
Okay, so it's not uncommon to, I guess what I'm hearing, to allow variance within that hundred-foot zone as long as the environmental document supports it? Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And I guess for you, you were saying elevation-wise where you're going to have the deck on the house is going to be how high from the creek?
Over 40 feet, I believe.
Over 40 feet above it? Okay.
I have a question there.
Yeah. Wayne?
This letter that you put out yesterday, I'm just guessing that it did not satisfy the concerns that they expressed this morning.
I believe it does, but you'd have to speak to them directly on that.
I would think this because they, they've seen this letter, right?
Yes, we talked about that letter yesterday and they have, we circulated that the same to you.
Well, I'm assuming since they gave testimony this morning that their concerns, that it did not completely address it. So that's, I'm just asking if you were able to work this out.
I think that they liked all of the things that we offered. They would have to answer that question on whether they have accepted it or not.
Could I call, or could we have their representative or one of them step back up and ask about that?
We're going to get two.
We have two.
Commissioner, we agree in principle to what they're proposing. The problem is, is we don't have the plans in front of us now, so we don't know whether anything is going to be adequately mitigated. And they're not enforceable conditions of approval. So we'd love to rest on, you know, Mr. Davis is a stand-up guy. I'd love to, you know, be able to take his word for it that they're going to be stand-up neighbors, but what happens if the property's sold? We just, there's too many unknowns. And that's why these kinds of issues are evaluated as part of the environmental document and they're made in enforceable conditions of approval. And then we have recourse if they don't follow through with that through the county. So that's-
Okay, do, are these eight items that he addressed, do they, do they satisfy you if they were in a more formal?
Well, I think if we had a staging plan before us, if we had a dust control plan, if we had the construction plan, if we had those things before us and we were able to see what the actual impacts were and evaluate those, sit down with them, and then those became enforceable conditions. And there were performance standards. That's the problem here is there are no performance standards. We'll create a plan. What is that plan going to entail? What are the maximums that you can, you know, hit before you exceed the plan? That's what our issue is.
The other point, the other point we've raised is we have, as I've raised in the opening remarks, there's going to be an economic impact on the lodge. And I think Gary has done, the letter which I reviewed yesterday, it's a good start, but we feel we need more time and we're asking for, that's why we asked for the delay. We don't want the project to be canceled. We need to delay and more time to talk to them.
And we really think that we can work these issues out. The problem is, is once you have a project approval, you know, there's incentives that you, so if we could work these things out, these become enforceable conditions of approval, we'd be in a lot better position going forward.
Yeah, I understand. They'd be less motivated if we go ahead and approve it today.
That's our concern, yes.
Let me see, so, you know, I'm reading here a lot of conditions of approval. And I guess it's your contention that these are not enforceable?
They're not definite or specific enough to be enforceable. They say the applicant shall prepare a plan, but there's no performance standards for the plan. You know, like the construction staging plan, the staging shall be as far as practical away from residents. What does that mean? How is that enforced? There's no definite standard. If you can come up with certain standards as to where they're going to stage, where these things are going to be located, the hours, you know, the truck trips, those types of things, then we, then you have a definite condition of approval that can be enforced and that, you know, they understand that they're under obligation to abide by those. And that's really what CECL requires. It requires definite performance standards and a list of measures that you choose from to meet those performance standards.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If I can throw something out there, just one option the commissioner may have is if this was returned back to staff, you know, I'm looking at the Gary Davis letter dated June 15th, which has a number of provisions that they propose to incorporate as part of the project. Those could be incorporated into conditions and fine-tuned so there are timing mechanisms on those. But if it was returned back to us, we would have time to work with both parties and possibly come back with some more further refined conditions of approval.
I know we probably want to discuss this some more. Are we going to go into discussion on this?
Well, I think if we've essentially closed the public comment, it's up to us to decide what do we want to do as staff may suggest it, or do we want to take action, or what do we want to do?
Can I just kind of throw something out? This is a very complex project with a whole lots of, I think, potential impacts. And to ask for this many variances, while I know we feel like we, kind of those have been processed through, I just, I want to make sure that we have certainly gone to a far extent to give the public the opportunity to weigh in on this. I'm troubled that the MAC spent, as I understand, four hours on this at their last meeting and couldn't really come to a conclusion other than on one item. I mean, that speaks to the complexity of this whole thing. And so I think, you know, is it a worthy project? It may be, but I think we just need to take it a little bit further down the road to make sure that we're satisfying the concerns of the community.
Okay.
And so I would propose that we postpone that decision until the two parties can get together and hammer out with the county the, these issues that need to be more defined.
EJ, oh, excuse me. What do you see as a timeframe for us to bring this back if we followed your suggestion?
Yeah, the question is whether or not this would be heard up here in Tahoe. We don't have any commission meetings planned up here in Tahoe. Maybe something in Auburn, so I'm not sure if that would cause any issue for, you know, the applicant or the other party.
Well, could I ask a question, EJ, on that? There is the potential this may get kicked down the road. I mean, it's up to the commission, but I'm seeing that this may motivate us to come back up again for this, right?
If I could interject, the request on that one, just for purposes of-
Right.
...this discussion is to go off calendar, not a date certain.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if we're there yet with this particular project, so I wouldn't tie them together.
Okay.
Then we can do the same on this.
We could, right.
Well, we continued another item this morning, or another item was continued by the applicant that may perpetuate-
A Tahoe-
That's true.
A Tahoe meeting.
Right. And we can certainly accommodate that.
Right.
So, you know, Commissioner Nader makes a good point.
Is there any other thoughts on this?
Two. One, it appears that the only thing that the MAC did have some regards about definitely was the, was the land coverage.
Right.
And I don't know that that's going to be something that they're going to debate or want to debate between themselves. I still think that's going to be our call. Does this, you know, do we bucket and say yes or no on that? And the other thing is I agree that we should probably lay a little bit on the further study of it. Just thinking back of the North Star problems that we listened to the last couple of meetings about this settling pond and the people down below it, that was engineered and they gave their, you know, opinion for groundwater, seepage and stuff like that. And there's still problems and they're both going like this still, so my thoughts would be yes, let's look that a little further into that.
I guess what I'm wondering is, there were some concerns about the environmental document.
And so if we were to look at this, we're just talking about having some meetings dealing with some conditions or the specificity of the conditions to clear up some of the misunderstandings or with the, are we going to be looking today at, you know, not approving the environmental document and putting it back to where that has to be re-looked at again? So that's maybe an issue when you think about it as a commission.
Well, I think the staff will review any changes they make against the environmental document and weigh that and, you know, that'll be part of their recommendation when it comes back. So I think it'll either have to be consistent or they'll have to adjust it or redo it.
That's correct.
Well, I agree with everything that's been said up to now. I'd just like to point out, like, you know, it's June 25th, today's what, June 26th? So I think, and although these are not new, necessarily new items, I mean, they're kind of a further explanation of what's in there, it is something new. And I agree with what Mr. Nader is proposing and what staff is, I guess, agreeing to or whatever, that this does need to be looked at. And it sounds like everybody does want to sit down and work on it and I'd rather have that than a big fight and lawsuits and what have you that might come down. It is a very unusual project. When I saw that, I didn't even quite see how it all related until I started looking at the maps, but there are quite a few issues still I think that need to be addressed. So I would like to see it referred back to staff for both further evaluation of this memo, get together with the applicant and some of the other people involved and bring it back at a off-calender as suggested by the county council here.
Okay, someone-
Do we need a motion on that?
Yes, we do. We need a motion to continue to an open date. Is that correct?
Also moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Is there, is there, I realize you're continuing as an open date. Is there a window that we could look at for this? I think there's some, probably some urgency that all of, we don't know what the outcome of North Star's hearings are going to be.
And we still don't know what Squaw Valley's actual final discussions with the owners actually work out to be.
Right.
Yeah, Kathy, second, there's a second meeting in July, which may or may not be too soon. And then there's the first meeting in August. I don't know if you can give me the S of those dates.
Okay. Thanks, EJ. I think that gives us an idea. We're still looking at midsummer or something.
I think we should look at a short timeframe.
Yeah.
And I think we should have the meeting here.
Yeah, I do too.
We can accommodate that.
I agree. I thought you would. All right, we have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yeah.
Mr. Moss, absent. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes.
Mr. Dugmio, absent. Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Okay, you all understand what's happened. We've continued just to an open date pending the outcome of the discussions between you guys and hope that you can bring back a resolution that everyone's pretty much in agreement with you.
Or I would like to, if you don't have agreement on most of the items, I'd like to, when it came, when it comes back to us, that there might be only one or two or several items that we need to resolve, I guess, or vote on, or make a decision one way or the other on not, you know.
Whether they're important or not.
Well, no, they're important, they'll be important because if they have a disagreement on anything, because it's awfully difficult to try and mitigate at a public hearing 20 or 30 items. So hopefully you can get it down to zero or at least a very small number for us to discuss further here.
Yeah. Okay.
That's what my desire would be.
Thank you, everyone. We have, I'll further clarify, we had scheduled next the North Star plan and that has been withdrawn by the applicant to-
So we'll have the commission make a motion on that.
Do you want a motion?
And I can take that item if you wish.
Okay, EJ?
Unless you need it. You want to jump into that item or do you want to take a recess?
No. Into North Star?
Right, I can present that just real quick as far as requests were continuing.
Was there, was there somebody from the one that commented?
I got a second, do we continue it? Make a motion?
Well, hold a minute there.
There may be people that want to make a comment, isn't a general-
Here's my, here's my suggestion. So we have a request, the next item, North Star Master Plan, we have a request from the applicant, which you have a copy of the letter, that they're requesting that the planning commission continue it to an off-calender date. So the commission will be asked to make a motion to that effect. If that's the case, my recommendation, since there is no staff report or anything to present regarding the project itself, that we do not take any public comment on this, that we wait for a full presentation by staff.
Okay.
I would have done it in the other public comment where you wouldn't have answered, so you deterred me from doing that. I can do it at the end of the meeting. Is there public comment at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, well, we can-
Okay, I'll do it then.
Okay, we'll do that. We'd like to keep you here.
Or you can go to public comment.
Is there, I guess I'm curious why we can't have public comment. I guess because we're not hearing the project, is it?
You're not hearing the project. You can take comment on the continuance, but I think it is plainly unfair to, when the request is to continue the item, to take any actual comments on the project itself.
Okay.
You can take general public comment. Just general public comment.
You can reopen the public comment period if you so desire. I would state on the record that those comments will not be associated with this project file because they will be during the general public comment period.
Okay.
And you can do that at the end of the meeting if you want.
Yes.
Or you can do it now.
No, we're now, don't make it.
Well, we're mad, this Mickey.
It's up to you. You're the chair, you decide.
Well, we did, I-
You have quorum, don't you? You still have four?
Yeah, we still have a quorum. We did tell her she could come here and comment earlier this morning and I'm feeling a little guilty about it. And I guess I'm tempted to let her comment as long as she doesn't address the project that discusses the continuance.
Larry, just open it, reopen it as a public comment now and then they can come up and state whatever they want.
Or take your vote on continuance as a public comment.
If you're going to reopen the general public comment period, my recommendation is you first take your vote on this request to continue the, this project item off-calender. Take the vote, we dispense with that, then you can make a motion to reopen the general public comment period and take additional general public comment, but keep the two separate.
Well, Mickey made a move, a motion.
Here it comes, here it comes. He's here.
To continue the item.
Right. You started that too? Yeah. All right, we have a motion to continue the item to an open time.
Second.
And we have a second. Is there any further comment? Oh, roll call.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Moss, absent. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes.
Mr. Dugmio, absent. Mr. Severson?
Yes. Okay. Now we'll allow a public comment.
Reopen it.
Reopen the public comment and invite anyone forward that would care.
Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident, for the record, I'll make this brief, I will submit my comments for the FEIS for the North Star Master Plan. You need to hear this. I went to the NIT-WAC meeting where this was approved five to three. I believe that vote would have been different. These people were only provided three days to make a recommendation to this board. And that is why I'm here today. And the applicant is now stating that the approval, they're asking for the extension and pulled off the calendar so they can revisit the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting of the project and overriding considerations. Those things were not provided to the NIT-WAC and I think this should go back to the NIT-WAC before it comes to you. Thank you for the opportunity for that comment.
Thanks, Alan. Any more public comment?
Is there any other persons that would care?
Anne Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. I was at that NIT-WAC meeting too and, you know, what's really been confusing about this application is that in between the draft environmental and the final, the zoning text amendment to change the allowed use for TPZ lands, timber production lands, was changed from being specific to North Star to being allowed anywhere in Placer County except inside the Tahoe Basin. So that was made midstream and I don't think anybody was understanding that change. So I think that's another reason that it needs to go back to NIT-WAC. So that's very clear that this is not just a project change. It's something that's going to affect all of Placer County. Thank you.
Okay, so I think staff heard that. Hopefully they did.
I think you better clarify.
I think one staff member was saying yes over there. They heard their comments. Okay. Okay. And perhaps that is an issue that needs to be addressed as a separate item countywide as a zoning text amendment or whatever category you put it in. And maybe it should be discussed as a memo with the board and have them give us direction as to whether or not we should take it as a special item and just see what their response might be, you know? Just tell them we're requesting-
You mean to the MAC?
No, I'm talking about the board of supervisors because this is a countywide issue. Once you, once TPZ has changed the categories that can be conducted within that zoning, I would like the board to authorize us to move forward in that direction. Does that make sense? You understand what I'm trying to get at? If, if they choose to, if they say, you know, we want to keep it site-specific, then they can tell us that, and we, we can hear it as part of the project, but I, I think it would be good to have their input.
Yeah, I guess as a, as a forester, I was looking at that myself, and I thought that was a pretty significant change in policy for the county, when you look at it fairly broadly, possibly even at North Star, but when you look at it broadly, that's a very significant policy change.
Okay, with that.
Any questions?
Public comment, I guess.
Public comment, all right.
Yeah, I have one more question. I'm William Venka, I'm a registered professional forester, and I did forestry at North Star from 95 to 1995 to 2011 as a contractor, so I did basically all the forest management over there. I left in 2011. Because I didn't agree with what we're doing. That's not the point. My question's about the TPZ. Is that, can, there's a zoning text amendment, and there's state law, the timber yield tax law, that says that the county supervisors, the Board of Supervisors, can propose a use, another use that they may feel is compatible in the TPZ zone. Now, then I see that the zoning text amendment is as part of the project. Now, will, can you guys, the planning commission, approve that TPZ tax zoning amendment that, that adds this other ski trail use in as part of the project, or are there going to be other public hearings through the board, with, in front of the Board of Supervisors to talk about this proposed new use in TPZ?
We can recommend it to the Board of Supervisors, one way or another, and then they can act independently.
Are they required to act, I mean, are they required to act in it, or would they just say, you know, you know, you guys make a decision or recommendation?
No, it didn't work that way. The Board of Supervisors has to make the zoning change.
Okay, so there will be another round of public hearings on the TPZ issue?
Well, if the board chooses to do it, that's what I'm.
Right, zoning.
A memo that I'm asking staff to take to the Board of Supervisors, is that they consider that?
Yeah, and just to clarify, zoning text amendments have to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. The zoning text amendment that is associated with this North Star Mountain Master Plan is, that would be brought forward to the Planning Commission for a recommendation that would go to the Board of Supervisors. What I'm hearing from Commissioner Sevenson is that, you know, maybe there should be a separate discussion of the, of the ZTA at the board, separate from the North Star Mountain Master Plan. Am I not hearing that right?
Well, there was public comment that indicated that maybe the result of doing that was going to open up TPZ county-wide to miscellaneous uses, and there was concern about that. And I, and I, I just was hoping that the board would take this as an item and give us direction as to, do they want us to consider it specifically for North Star only, and even theirs as it has been in the past, or should we consider that maybe it's a county-wide issue? And I'm not sure, I have never thought of it as a county-wide issue personally. It's always been specific to North Star, is my recollection.
I guess, I guess kind of along those lines, though, if if a zoning text amendment is included in the North Star proposal, as just North Star, that still would have to be approved by the supervisors based on a recommendation of the Planning Commission.
That's correct. That's correct.
So either way, it would take supervisor's approval.
Yeah, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation, one way or the other on that, before it goes to the board.
But then the other idea is that when you, when you kind of open the Pandora's Box, then it does tend to become a possible precedent, wide, wide county issue, because the, you know, the board would be saying that, you know, in this case, we can do, do it, and so, you know, other people might propose, because you did it here.
Right, and, and, you know, not typical of any other zoning text amendment that, that your commission has heard before, it would be, it would still go to the Planning Commission first for a recommendation. So just in the case of, of the situation we're talking about, we would still ask you for a recommendation. So I'm not certain that we would get, you know, you would be in a position where you would be getting a direction from the Board of Supervisors, you actually would be providing a recommendation on it to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
But there's, there's this discussion, and I'm not sure how it came about, that, that because of something that we were doing, whether it was in the environmental document, I believe Ellie mentioned that it was covered in the environmental document, that that was going to become a county-wide issue. I don't think we have to discuss that as part of this project necessarily. I think that's a separate issue.
And, and, and not to get into this, the North Star Mountain Master Plan project, which we can't discuss today.
Right.
Based on your action, that there is a, you know, that is a component in there that, that if, you know, the fact that it is in there, it will be brought before you to have that discussion.
And I would expect that to happen, and that's okay. I, the issue that I'm a little concerned about is if we take that action and approve the project, and it's in the environmental document, that it's going to be county-wide or refers to it that way, I think that's a concern. Is that, am I?
That makes perfect sense, and, and you would, you would, you would want to express those concerns in the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, we can do that, that'll be fine, all right.
I think that's how it would be handled.
Yeah.
Could I ask one more question? I mean, I'm trying to get.
You had any easier ones?
No, I don't know, I mean, because it's getting work-accusing, but I hope I can make a simple question, but, okay. So the TPZ zoning text amendment is an issue no matter what. I mean, state law says that the County Board of Supervisors have to approve this new, a new proposed compatible use, so whether it's the county-wide or just the project-wide, that is the issue, that they have to address it as per the state timber tax law, and then with county rules, there's, there would be public hearings, specifically for the TPZ issue or not? Will there be additional public hearings just for the Board of Supervisors when they take that on? Public notification and.
It'll be part of this project.
So it's, so the public hearing, does that mean the public hearing has already happened?
No, it hasn't even been there.
There will be, the North Star Mountain Master Plan project was just continued to an open date. So there will be a public hearing at Planning Commission, here in Tahoe, as, as, as we come up with. And then there will also be a Board of Supervisors hearing, another opportunity for public input on.
To discuss the TPZ issues.
To discuss the North Star Mountain Master Plan and the, and the related TPZ issue. All that is part of their proposal.
Okay, thank you, because I was just trying to make sure that that, the, the final meeting would not be the end of it, that this has got to be out there, because I think a lot of people, because it wasn't noticed even in the draft EIR, when that public notice came out, it said various Placer County discretionary permits never disclosed the TPZ zoning text amendment in that public notice. So I got that in the mail, set aside the EIR over the holidays, because it came out right before Thanksgiving, picked it up after Christmas, and, and holy smoke, you know, being a forester, I started digging into that TPZ issue and said, wow, that's never happened before, that you, you know, can't just approve a compatible use. Planning Commission has got to go forward, so thank you.
Well, we will, we will be reviewing the final environmental impact statement, so this public hearing will be potentially the final hearing at the Planning Commission level.
And did you hear a request to have it sent back to the MAC as well? That we might be considered or not?
Well, I don't know, that's.
Well, I mean, we just heard it, so I won't ask what is requested by the.
I think that's the staff's decision. If they think there's going to be changes as a result of this, it could go back. I, I don't think it's.
Yeah, certainly when it comes before the Planning Commission, and the same question comes up, we, you, it could be your decision to send it back to the MAC.
Well, okay.
Well, thanks, thanks for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else, quickly? If not, we're going to take a two-minute recess.
We have one more.
I know, I know we have another item, but.
We have somebody walking.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I didn't know if this was the correct place or not. My name is Christian Michael Steele, and I am a property holder in Tahoe City for the past six years, and I come just looking for some direction. I understand we're doing some new zoning plans and this type of stuff, and I have a 30-acre parcel. Are you entertaining new, our possibility for new projects at this point? Can, is it public? Open to the public right now for new projects, or is this, are we on an agenda for existing projects?
Well, this is just for existing projects that have been proposed. Where is the property?
It's kind of been under the radar for a long time. It's in Tahoe City, right across from the high school. It's 30 acres, which is green-belted by forest lands, and I'm trying to do a, like a world-class retreat, and I wanted to get some direction on who to talk with and be able to address, to try and see if I can get the counter to support this type of.
I would encourage you to get in contact with staff.
Staff?
He's got his little finger up, and, and talk to him outside of this meeting, and also get involved in the community plan process that's going on with Placer County about this whole region and TRPA, which also is interested in what you're doing, so.
To get, to support a staff first, is what you would be.
I would start with the county staff, yes. They, they'll answer most of your questions, for sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, then we're going to take a two-minute recess. The agenda says it's 10:40.
We don't have a quorum, Larry.
Yeah, we have three. And this is just.
An action item, right?
This next item is an action item, a sister report, very short, I was told. Steve is going to talk really fast, because otherwise he had to buy lunch. All right, we're going to have a quick update on the community plan for the Tahoe Basin from Steve, and I want you all to listen very closely and ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Did you challenge him to be quick?
Yes, otherwise, because he has to buy lunch.
Of course, there's no questions, right? Once again, Steve Yona, providing an update on the Tahoe community plan for your commission on behalf of Planning Services Division. What I intend to do is provide a little background on where we've been with the, the community plan update, and then also outline the next steps along the way. As your commission will likely recall, the direction came from our Board of Supervisors in July of 2011 to initiate the update of the plans. The Tahoe area currently holds nine separate community plans or general plans, and the idea behind this is to update that to contain one overarching policy, community plan, and then there'll be four separate development codes that will come out of that. The next slide will actually illustrate, those four development codes will identify the different areas within the Placer County portion of the Tahoe region. We have the North Tahoe East Plan area, which is largely the Kings Beach area, east towards the state line. Then there's North Tahoe West Plan area, and that's essentially Tahoe Vista and Carnelian Bay area. The Greater Tahoe City Plan area is essentially Dollar Hill down to just south of the Y, and the remainder, large areas, West Shore Plan area. Today, the update before, your Planning Commission is yet another example of the extensive public outreach that's been conducted along the way for this process. We've held 28 community workshop, so are meetings, seven town hall meetings, various stakeholder interviews, as well as regular updates before the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council, as well as the Board of Supervisors. We've also prepared an existing conditions report and economic market analysis, and that helped to inform the visioning process. There's been visioning process for both the Tahoe City area, for both town centers essentially, the Kings Beach area, as well as Tahoe City. From the visioning efforts, topical policy workshops that I'll speak to in the next slide here were conducted to help provide the framework for the policy document. We've also prepared a public review draft of the community plan policy document, and I'll just note a couple of these items I'm going to speak to in more detail on a couple of the subsequent slides. Staff has also begun to the preparation of the pilot or prototype administrative draft area plans or development codes, specifically the Kings Beach area. We've selected an EIR, EIS consultant. You'll note the environmental document for this, so will both serve the needs of the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, as well as the county, and that's the reason for the EIR, EIS component. And we've also begun a parking management plan. I mentioned topical policy workshops. These began after the public workshops were conducted in fall of 2013. There was four topics that were selected for more detailed discussion, and also provided an opportunity for the public to ask questions and provide comment or feedback as well. Those topic areas were conservation, recreation, public service and facilities, transportation, and of course, land use, community design, and development potential. In a meeting very similar to the update before you today, the Board of Supervisors conducted a public workshop on April 21st over in Tahoe City at Grand LeBach, and the purpose of that meeting was for staff to provide a staff's update report on the work that's been done, also to discuss the community vision, visioning that had been completed, and to speak to the several different components, including opportunity sites, I'll speak to that in just a minute here. But also to provide the board with an outline on the timeline of where we're at in the process and what the next steps are, and of course, to always receive that direction from the board on how to proceed. This slide actually does a real good job of encapsulating a lot of what I'm speaking to here and showing where the different components tie together for the community plan update process, starting with the community vision, existing conditions report, then dovetails into the visioning documents and the framework portion of the community plan policy. From that, we drafted the community plan policy document that I'll speak to in one of the next slides, and the next step along the ways that we're beginning to work on, as well as the draft area plans, those four plans that I spoke to earlier. Public review drafts Tahoe community plan. This, this document came out as a result of those four topical policy workshops that were held in fall of 2013. This document was released in May for a 45-day public comment period, which actually ended on Monday, June 23rd. From, from here, staff is about beginning to work on the four individual area plans, as I mentioned. One of the, the results of some of the community meetings that we've had was that the community identified the, the need for staff to take a look at some of the, the parking needs and issues within the Tahoe Basin. The result of that, the Department of Public Works and Planning Services Division began to, to take on that work project and prepare a parking management plan. There's basically going to be two components to that. One is to take a look at the existing plan language and parking ratios, development standards, design standards, and update those to current standards. In the Tahoe Basin, we're currently operating under guidance from the community plans, which was right around the 1994 era. The other is to identify potential areas where we may be able to address some of the, the parking need. One of those areas was the Grove Street parking lot in Tahoe City, and Kings Beach is a little bit more unique, and that, to look at the individual sites throughout the area. This management plan will take a look at, at all those components, and the review of this will run concurrent with the other efforts within the community plan update. Speaking to the community plan update, EIR, EIS, the county has selected a consultant as a senior environmental, which is prepared to the scope of work for proceeding with this. That will include the evaluating community plan policy document, land use and zoning, as well as program-level review of opportunity sites. I'll speak to that in the next slide here. And as many of you are aware, the area plan portion, the county will adopt the area plans, but we also need to submit those to TRPA to determine that they're in, in conformance with the regional plan update. So all of that will be addressed by the consultant. So all of that will be addressed by the consultant. Opportunity sites. One of the components of the community plan will be to analyze potential opportunity sites at a more of a program level. What these sites would be is some sites in Tahoe City, as well as Kings Beach, and I'll show you those in one of these next slides here. But they're sites that are intended to provide a catalyst for furthering the efforts of the community plan update and implementing the goals and policies that are contained within that document. So moving to Tahoe City, there's six locations identified. Most of you are probably familiar with these, but if you have any questions, I can point them out a little bit better. The Henrickson property, just north and to the west of that, the larger area, the golf course to the south, Fanning Bridge right at the Y, moving just north to Commons Beach. Area number five, this is basically the Tahoe Marina area and the area surrounding that. And then, of course, the river from properties, and that's the, the properties along the, the river entering into Tahoe City. Moving over to where we're at now, the opportunity sites within the Kings Beach area. I'm sure you're also familiar with the Kings Beach Town Center, also referred to as BBLC. That area is, is being analyzed, as well as waterfront improvements. Actually, that's encapsulates the area that we're around right, right now. And then just in the north of that, between Seaplane and Deer, that, that block is also being analyzed for future development.
Question, what, what determines an opportunity area?
An opportunity area is areas that, that are being identified and analyzed just at a very program level. We're not taking a look at the project level review, but to do some of the environmental analysis and preparation and-
I know, but what, why those areas and not some other area, I mean?
That's a good question. Do you?
Well, like, for example, the, the ones in Kings Beach, the, the one property that was identified was the former, former BBLC project. That was that, an EIP project that there was at one point a proposed development there. The other one or some of the, in Kings Beach are the redevelopment areas. The properties that were owned by Redevelopment Agency.
So number two, right here, why? That's here?
Yeah, that's the recreation area and potential possibilities to further redevelop this area into, to have more events and things like that here, so.
Well, I guess why my question is, do the people who have this property now, or us, ask to be this? Or do we go in and say, well, that looks good, let's pick that as an opportunity area? What's, what's the difference a block down to the left from that? I mean, what, why are those opportunity areas and not somewhere else? I'm just curious.
You know, I'm-
I could be wrong on that, but, on this, but I, I think those areas that were just identified as being suitable for potential redevelopment. So there might be-
I mean, is it the community say that's where we think it is, or did a staff person say that? Or did somebody here at the board say, I like that one?
It was, you know, as part of the visioning process, there was community meetings. Like I said, number one there, that's the former Kings Beach Town Center BBLC, BBLC site. That was a-
Well, I have no argument with the sites being chosen might be the right ones. I'm just curious as to the, the procedure for choosing opportunity sites? Just a quick, one sentence answer.
Yeah, the identification of the opportunity sites was one of the components that went before the Board of Supervisors, along with the, the timeline. So the board did have the opportunity to weigh in on what sites were selected.
I'm not curious about the board, I'm just saying, how come these got presented to the board? Why these sites? That's all, just a simple question. How come these sites got chosen as opportunity sites? Who, I mean, is there a committee that does it? How about you?
Well, there's been, yeah, there's been communities, committees and stuff to a certain degree. I think it's just a schematic. I don't think those yellow circles are precise at all. I think they just show regions that are to look at. As an example, on the right side of circle two, there's a proposal for a waterborne transit pier. And so that will feed tourists into this region.
So is the people who were, wanna put that in, are they the ones who said this is an opportunity site?
You know, I think part of it too, Mr. Gray, is, is our economic development division. They, they were really involved in looking at the areas within Kings Beach and, and Tahoe City and areas that are, like I said, were former redevelopment sites.
So all of these were former redevelopment sites?
No, not, not all of them, but, but some of them. Some of them have been-
Identified by recent sales.
Well, like in, like in City of Roswell, they, I think we use the same terminology. Opportunity sites are the ones sometimes that are just vacant land or, or underutilized land, or maybe land that maybe could be-
For redevelopment?
Could be built on.
And I'm just curious how the decision for those sites was made. And I still haven't heard an answer yet as to how those-
Keep in mind- Okay, if you wanna know, I got in my pencil, my hello, Dylan, I did it.
Okay, well, that'd be fine. That'd be fine, I'm just-
It was, it was from our Economic Development Department. They were mostly a part of-
They were the ones tasked with coming up with the ideas?
Yes, potential sites. Yeah, they were, and had put-
That's all I was looking for, the economic council.
And it's been reviewed by the public, of course.
It's been in all the public meetings, it's been in front of the board.
They've gone through lots of hearings and stuff.
I don't think it's site-specific necessarily very much, I think it's just region.
It's got areas.
Yeah. Because I, I've never heard anybody tell me that everything inside those circles is where you can get. I think as far as transferring in from, under the TRPA thing, transferring in density and height and different things, these areas were, I think, the blue area would have been the, probably the area that is most logical for-
The town center?
Community rules or some kind of rules concerning that area? Well, yeah, the TRPA plan encourages moving density out of areas that's, that are high hazard, you know, stream zones and things, and transferring the density into these town centers. And, and we're encouraged to get the development out of those stream zones. And the idea was to move it into the town centers where people could walk and, and not have to drive to do everything. Walkable community, so there'll be, that's, that's one of the big pluses, yeah.
Okay.
Because there's gonna be sidewalks and bike trails, and then hopefully waterborne transit is in addition to what's already there, so.
So just understand Economic Development Council, is that the?
Economic Development Division.
Division.
It's part of CEO's office.
Good.
They don't have anything to do anymore.
Yeah. Now that the economy's doing a lot of-
You're a little far off, by the way.
Especially, could you go back to Tahoe City?
Absolutely.
What's number six?
It's riverfront properties, just as you enter into Tahoe City, if you're coming from Truckee to the, the right there. I believe that's the-
Caltrans yard or-
Yeah, Caltrans yard and the old yard.
I was just wondering if it's part of the rafting or-
No, that's actually located closer to three, but outside, well, portions of it are, are within the, the three area.
See, here again, the circles are a little bit misleading, I think. It's somewhere in the future is gonna be more precise, I would hope.
It's just arrogant.
Yeah, well, I was just having kind of an arrogant thought if it was rafting, but you apparently have rafting up at three. Is, when we have a, a hearing frequently where we're looking at the, the county permits for rafting, there's always a, a conflict that comes up where the National Forest put in point there, where all the users in that area, conflict. And it seems to me in the process, maybe it's already in the thought process, but it could be that, that, you know, through the process, maybe the county could take a look at acquiring a special use permit, so you can manage the overall rafting activities on the Truckee River. And could be the Forest Service would be compatible with that idea. Just, just a thought to throw out, maybe totally arrogant, but when I look at the map, I see that and I always hear this problem coming up. And rafting companies are always having to clean up after the people that are just out there having a good time with their beer cans or whatever. And so to somehow combine that, maybe, you know, maybe in the process somewhere in this?
I don't think the Forest Service is at all interested in the rafting on the river. They, we've talked to them 100 times about it over the years, and they just, if we wanna do it, it's okay with them.
Yeah, so that you maybe have an opportunity entered to some kind of permit with them where actually the county could control all the rafting.
Well, I think we do now, pretty much all the commercial rafting.
Yeah, but I mean, the private too, you could have some kind of-
So number three is, is that there is more of a riverwalk concept, where you'd have a, a walking area, pedestrian path along the river in, in that area? Maybe a boutique hotel area? So there was some discussion in the visioning process about having river, riverwalk opportunities, recreation in, in that, as it just relates to number three.
Okay. Well, maybe my thought was arrogant, but I'm just throwing it out.
See, the, the reason I think that he's outlining that as a riverwalk area is because probably the new road is gonna turn off and go diagonally across between three and six and intersect with a roundabout. And that's what's being proposed, and I think is funded now. And so that will be the bypass to the traffic, it'll mitigate the west shore traffic, hopefully.
And there'll be a bridge at six or something? Will there be a bridge at six or something?
It'd be a bridge across the river. There's some hope amongst various personnel that the Caltrans yard will be taken out and moved across on the north side of the road.
And then that road going across is what the new Transit Center area, that, that property, the road would go across?
Yeah, it goes across, you know, picks up. And you'd be around about over here.
Yeah, no Irish law or whatever.
When Blue Line crosses, any rate, you, you would cut that corner off and that, and that's pretty much been funded and gonna go forward, as it appears.
Leviate some of that Y problem?
Yeah, alleviate, yeah. So there's some discussion about the existing bridge, which is three, was in the, in the dam and that whole area to become sort of a pedestrian-
Friendly.
-area, you know, and it seems to make some sense. And then, of course, the, the bottom edge of five is that, you see that pier going out. That's gonna be the, it's supposed to be the, the waterborne transit town for the Tahoe City areas.
Larry, when is that bypass going in supposedly?
It's probably gonna be another year and a half, two years before they break ground. But the, the thought on three, on six is that whole area could become just a river park and not have Caltrans yard and all that stuff in there. Move it out, and so as you come into the basin, you don't see industrial type usage.
You don't see Caltrans.
Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I did.
Actually, I did.
Well, then you can apologize.
Yeah, I'll apologize.
We're not sorry.
I thought it was just a ploy, so I had to pay for lunch.
Yeah.
We're counting on you.
So on that note, in summary, no, I'm kidding. Timeline update, administrative draft documents and the beginning of the environmental analysis that timelines for, you know, this spring, 2014. We will then be coming back before your planning commission for deliberations on the public review draft documents in the fall, fall or winter of, of this year, 2014. Targeting a board adoption of May of next year, 2015. After that board adoption, we'll be submitting to TRPA. As I stated, you know, we'll need to, TRPA will need to make the determination that the area plans are, are in conformance with their regional plan update. As I stated earlier, the draft review community plan policy document comment in, period ended June 23rd. We did receive comments from Leaked to Save Lake Tahoe, Friends of the West Shore, as well as the Tahoe Area Sierra Club. Next steps are to release the notice of preparation for the EIR/EIS and to prepare, begin the preparation of the administrative draft area plans. That's the development codes. Along the way, we will be conducting public workshops on the draft area plans to seek public comment. And as I was speaking to earlier on the parking management plan area, we will also be asking for public input on that. But that process will be running concurrent with the area plan preparation. So with all that, this last slide, one of the things I should have mentioned on the, one of the first slides, our website, the county's website, we continue to maintain that and update that with the most current information. It's always a great source for people to go to. But we also have here, Crystal Jacobson is a great contact for any of the information on the community plan update, and her information is included there. And then lastly, if anyone wishes to have copies of the PowerPoint presentation, we can make that available as well, so.
Okay, Steve, any questions? Good job. Steve ended this up with his eyes closed, he goes to all those meetings and stuff.
Yeah, but he's had enough money for lunch.
If there's no other public comment. Oh, there she is, she does. Okay, we will have public comment for those that choose to comment.
Thanks, this is what we've been waiting for. This is actually what we came for. But anyway, thank you. I've been on the community plan team for North Tahoe East for two years, and I really was disappointed when we didn't have a chance to do scale and density, because we thought that was so important as part of the planning process and, and our teamwork. Our teams really did real well. We did height, we did use, and we, so anyway, we've gone to Supervisor Montgomery, and she's allowed to let us finish our job. And we're hoping all the other teams, she said we'll all get a chance, like a half day or a day meeting to do that, so we could just finish up, so we'd have a complete job product. So that's, we're hoping that's what's gonna happen. And on, as far as the policy document, also, we, we were told that we would be given the chance to review our teamwork before it was released to the, to the public, so we could make sure it was right. So that would be good. And we're hopeful that's gonna happen. And then the other thing was on the policy document for the area plans, we were concerned, a number of us, that part of the policy was the expansion of North Star and Homewood ski areas. And we thought that that should really be a project level policy, you know, when it comes forward, it shouldn't just be a general policy for Placer County to promote expand, further expansion of those ski areas. Then they were also including, doing an environmental review, and this is a totally new idea, of converting commercial floor area into TAUs. And there's about 350,000 square feet of commercial floor area left in the regional plan, and another 200,000 square feet that's been allotted. So that could just be, you know, Placer County doesn't feel they have enough TAUs, they only think they have about 1,400. They can't really find an adequate number. That may be the case, and they're doing an analysis, but I don't know that this should be part of the policy either until it's really completely capacity and existing inventory is. So there's some stuff that is, needs to really be looked at, and thank you for letting me comment.
Ellie Waller?
Good afternoon, Ellie Waller, member of the North Tahoe West Plan Team. I attended each and every meeting with Steve. I've been to every single one. I've turned in hundreds of pages of comments that staff is still addressing. And I'm wondering when we'll be getting the policy document back for review. Again, the teams have only met six times in a team structured meeting. Then there's been town center meetings, there's been workshops, and the teams, as Ms. Nichols mentioned, have not been given the document back. We were given the document as a draft in November of 2012, and we are still waiting for that back. She also mentioned we did speak with Supervisor Montgomery, and she has subsequently spoken with Planning Director Michael Johnson. And we will be afforded a meeting that is yet to be scheduled after the staff incorporates the technical committee meeting, reviews of the policy document and all our comments. The consultant still has to incorporate all that. The opportunity sites aren't necessarily part of the area plan. It's a, a process that's being looked at through the policy document. So some of those areas are points of contention that you will hear a lot about. The golf course is an example. Right now, it is not part of the existing community plan, the Tahoe City Golf Course. And they're asking that through the policy document, that be analyzed. It still may not be added, so that opportunity- It still may not be added, so that opportunity site may not be identified. The devil's in the details here, and again, I take a lot of time and effort to read these environmental documents, and I do comment on a regular basis, and you'll see me often. Thank you.
Bye, Ellie. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else? If there's no other comments by any board members that, you know, they need to expound on, we're adjourned.